Hey and welcome back to Might and Magic 1, picking up at Algarve. We just... well, in the previous episode, we just killed the winged demon, which eventually turned out it wasn't such a great deal to do. We are still exploring this bit, because why the hell not? And it seems that it gives quite a lot of experience by itself. Uh... sure, we learned that the Acid Rain is an awesome spell. We learned that Deadly Swarm is an awesome spell. Our two mages can actually deal serious damage now. Especially in the, uh, over the world. Uh, Thumstones. Unearthed Coffin? Examine? Sure! Yay, it's a vampire! I'm sorry, it was a vampire. I feel slightly disappointed in that. Hey, that's free experience! Goddammit. Disease. Attack. Burn with the lightning bolt. Or not? Anything else you can use against them? Probably not. My swords are the best answer. 3500... Whoa! Chainmail +3! That's a new one, and guess who's gonna get that? Uh, 6... no, no. 5, 4. Cast 5, 4, oh, 3. Perfect! Away we go! Not afraid of troglodytes. What about Clerics? Paralyze, eh? Attack. Uh, 3, 4, B. 1, 1. Fight B. Some decent XP. Well, I can't say decent anymore, right? The items were okay. I did want to go back purely because of the chainmail. Uh, Splitmail. So this goes straight. 3, 4, D. Please tell me you can equip that. Remove. 3. Equip. Yes! Plus 2 AC. First upgrade in couple episodes. Probably someone else should wear it. Can't swim, can't swim, can't swim. But can explore, huh? Thumstones. I wonder if I could just kill the other guys over and over again? Nicely done. Eradicated them in a single turn, I think. It was so worth it to come here. Can't swim! Nice. This concludes this bit. Almost. Parents go bye-bye and... Insul, as always, failed. Just that one last enemy was supposed to die. But now, Insul had to miss. Oh, 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 look at that. I was not expecting dragons in here. Um... I don't know. 5, 3. That's a waste. Uh, 5, 1. Not affect that. Okay, they takes... I'm so... I'm bound. I'm so bound! In a single turn! Whoa! Um, let's not fight the dragons. I will fight them. Well, not those specific dragons. I do need to mark them on map. Um... where's the icon? Here's the icon. Here's the note. Back Dragon. Uh... Dragons. Perfect. I wonder what else is here? Payable building of gold. Oh yes, I already explored this, silly me. Dragon City Town Meeting Disrupt? Yes! *laughs* Oh my god. So, we've got a green, blue, white, gray, black, red, gold, silver dragons, an archdevil, and a demon lord. Uh... we're gonna win this, right? I don't know. Kill the demon lord? I would laugh if that worked. Deadly Swarm! Oh my god. Does something die or run away? I don't know. Never interrupt a meeting. Note for myself. Good that I didn't find anything useful. So, let's not disrupt that, but explore this bit a little bit more. I think that those were fine. I hope. 4, A. Okay, turn not affected by lightning bolts. Uh, Deadly Swarm. Not too good as well. I should cast Protections from Fire. Well, I survived the first turn. What was that about wanting to hunt dragons? Yeah... Let's mark those as well. Uh, Red Drag... uh... Dragons, right. Dragons. Monster. Beware. I doubt that any sort of magic could help me here. Cast 5, 5, South 1. Green Dragons. How bound am I now? 5, 3, B. At least that worked. Feel there's a lot of dragons here. Okay, two of them went down. We may be able to do this. April Poison. By Wahuka. Okay, one dead. Can I make them dead-er? Okay. Cast 6, 1. Shoot A. Attack. That is weird. Oh, no. Ah! No! No! That was so close! Uh, I know at least where I shouldn't go, so... That's a no-go for now. Can I explore this bit? So, uh, 5, 5, South 1. Huh, I potentially can. Uh, cast 5, 5, South 1. Oh, look at that. An island in the middle. Put this here. Aug says: "Begone." Aug. I think I saw him in some of the manuals of the game. I will look it up later on, probably before the next episode, but for now, we still need to explore here. South 2. Uh, 5, 5, East 2. Cast 5, 5, West 4. South 2. I think that's the best way we can do this. 6, South 2. Uh-huh. West 2. 6, cast 5, 5, North 2. Nice checkerboard. Uh... Cat. Oh, you're out. Seriously? I could get myself bound here. 3, cast 6. 5, I guess. Sarpical, here I come! Uh, let's see. This actually makes me a bit clueless. I looked on the big map, and this actually makes me clueless on where to... where I should go now. Let's try 6, cast 5, 5, North 3. Oh, there was a secret here. Can I actually... yeah, let's explore the telltale bits. Now, what about from here? Cast 5, 5, North 1. A bunch of enemies, which is good. A terrible experience. No good loot. And once again, nothing too decent. It's all about discovery, about exploration here. Otherwise, you could, on the other hand, just unscrew the whole map. Uh, remove the fog of war, but that would be no joy in exploring. It would be more or less just moving the cursor over the map and find stuff. Oh, I just noticed at the top-right, left corner, where the B2, I believe, is, there's the door to one of the elemental planes. I did see the blue door on the map in the bottom-right corner as well. So that's 2 out of 4, I believe. So there's still a lot of things to do before. Is that it? Uh... Yeah, this, this kind of sucks. Alright, no. 5, 1. Hmm, oh well. Didn't I cast Turn Undead before? I did not. Blubs goodbye. What else? Yeah, I think I may need to focus on killing that single dragon. Once I clear out this bit, I'll go and hunt that one. Uh... Fight B. Cast 5, 1. Fight B. 5, 1. Uh, Shoot B. Fight B. Not bad, not bad. Experience is still terrible. Oh, oh, there was a secret. Okay. Is that it? Drop E. Smelling salts. Think that removes paralysis, or unconscious, or sleep? Got no clue. Statue of blocks. Block the path. Smash them? Yes. Created guards. I didn't see any guards. That's it? Oh! Passage on the other side. Uh, there's a cavern here. I think this is the Medusa Cavern. Oh, that's how I was supposed to get here in the first place. Bet that I went from the other side. No, no. Cast 5, 1. Think that's a good escape. Uh... You shouldn't be bothered checking it out now. Lot of exploration here. Fight E. Attack. Really? Really? 6, 1. I'm surprised that the devils are getting so little damage. Oh. Oh, I had to probably forget to sleep. Block. 5, 1. Can I control it? Rest? Probably barely. Rest. Anything else? Oh, yes, maybe. I do see a secret on the map. I'll leave that for... 9, 9, Raven Slayer. Where did I leave my trusty pencil? I'm sorry for bumping the microphone. Uh... pencil, where are you? Anyway, I left somewhere here. I'll note it down on a side for now. 9, 9, Raven Slayer. There we go. What's this secret about? Nothing? Okay, that's weird. But we get out of that place. Impassable. Okay, and this is the border between here and the other area. Oh, I can actually get out of here. Nice. But I do want to fight some more. There we go. There they go! Paralyzed, really. Um... removed. 6, cast 5, 5, North 1. Okay, that's it for... oh, North 1. Strange fountain drink. Uh, yes. Cheers. Lot of enemies, different types. Um... Why do I start with Insul? He's got 30 speed. Weird stuff. Uh, attack, attack. 5, 1. Attack, 5, 1. A knowledge book. That's a new one as well. Yes. Cheers. I drank again. What does it do? Temporary raises a random attribute of each party member to 30. Temporary. Oh, both of them do the same. So... Personality might... Personality. Speed. Intelligence and intelligence. Good for Wahuka. Um, can I get out of here? I cannot. 6, cast 5, 5, East. I don't know, my gate. Perfect. I don't really care about the stat raise. I do want to get back to town. Seriously. I do want to get back to town and get a line to sell stuff. And save because of that Book of Knowledge. Solve this, solve that. Uh, solve this, this, this. Great bow. Chainmail. Leather scroll and scroll of fire. And you've got nothing for sale. Nice. Saved. We got loads of food. So let's try 3, 2, then just B3, I believe. Hmm, B2 would be better. There's still a little bit more to explore here, so let's try that first. Oh! There's a combat here. Mummies in a lich. Begone. 3, 4, and B. Fight D. Did it do anything to me? I don't, I don't think so. Actually, yeah. Deadly Swarm. Shoot D. Fight D. Only disease doesn't really matter for the combat. Bless. Leather skin. Fight D. Uh, 6, 1. It heals, I guess. At the very least. Really, the whole... most of the party members are now diseased. Attack. Shoot. Attack. 4. Why are we fighting them again? This is like a set combat that they will always appear here. Doesn't really matter, I guess. Cast 5, 3 on E. Didn't work. Fight E. Cast Turn Undead. It's okay-ish. Fight D. They don't deal that much damage. Fight D. Um... can you 4, 1, D? You cannot. Fight D. Yeah, easy. They should be dead now. Block, block. Cast 6, 1, just in case. A black box. Robber's crossbow. Oh yes! 3, 2, E, 3. There's three medic nearby, there is not. So cast... that was 6... no, that was 5, 4, 1. Cast. Cast 5, 4, 2. Cast 5, 4, 3. Hmm... And that's it. Yes, good. Rest, save, yes. Really. Really? Think you send a chance against me now, eh? And deadly swarm can be only cast outside. Yes, I didn't know. Thank you, game. Rest, yes. What about that robber's Xbow, uh, crossbow? Insul. Uh, item. A robber crossbow. Remove the crossbow itself. Equip the robber's crossbow. Uh, I think it also raises his thieving abilities. It doesn't say here. But this calls for a rematch. North 1. Attack. Begone. Nice, two mummies destroyed. Uh... Oh, it raised... huh? It raised his speed as well! That will mess me up completely. Fight C. Um, fight C. Bless. Shoot C. A... Cast 4, 4 on C. It's not affected. Of course, he's not affected. *laughs* Who else could it be? Insul got eradicated. So... yeah, I don't have resurrection spell. It will cost a lot, I think. It's a worse condition than, uh, being dead. Um... cast 4, 7, 5. Shoot C. Pretty good. Okay, disease is something I can work with, but not eradication. Cast. 5, 4, 3. Shoot. 50, 600. So there are, there's group of 2 in here. Uh... This will hurt. And I hope they will not kill Wahuka. Otherwise, I will be bound. How are we on health? We are full on health. Okay, Ragnar is eradicated. Awesome. Fight F. Okay, they are done for. Do I have anything I could cast? 4, 2. Hmm, definitely not. Can I... no effect. Whoa, 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 don't do that! 6, 1. Wake up! Good. Okay, that's still manageable. 4, A. 6, 1. Do I have any other spells I could use? Not really. No. Okay, ladies sin got up. Ladies sin went down. Okay, cleric's still up. Well, Esther. And that's the last one. Blind Eye goes down. Yay! Cast 5... no, cast 4, 1. Not enough spell points. You have 2. Cast 1, 4. Boom! Days I can use that. 8,000. I need to open it with anyone who can cast magic. I don't care. Really, the party nearly got killed again. Oh no, both Esther and... And, 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 and... Wahuka are paralyzed. Oh, okay, good. Spell passes afterwards. Uh, 6, cast 3, 2, E, 3. Cast 3, 2, E, 3. Yep, that's what I wanted. Or actually, no. Cast 3, 2... No, cast 6, 5, 1. Let's see how expensive is restoration from being eradicated. 5, 4, 2. Cast 5, 4, 3. I bet around 1,000. 2,000. Ouch! Way overpriced. But we had nothing better to, to, to... To fix that issue. B2. And instead of fighting the lich... that's fine. We'll kill and check out the dragon. Except I won't get there at this base. That should be only one of them. But hey, whoa, a long plus 2, that's also nice. Might be an upgrade for, uh, for cleric. For Esther. Why do I still keep calling her a cleric? I know that's re-class, but still. And the problem with, uh, with Insul is, he has the awesome crossbow, but he can't use it most of the times. I could replace... no. Even when changed with Blind Eye, he will not be able to do so. All can poison. No? Surprised or surprise? Padded armor. Rest. Yeah, it's only one red dragon that I can take care of. 5, 3, 8. Yeah, you can just attack, I guess. Uh, 5, 1. Actually, I should be able to take him out in the first turn. But well, there's always a second time. Attack, cat. 5, 1. Shoot A. Yay, dragon went down. That's, that's for the money, this method. But it's only one spawn. Cast, uh, no. Cast 3, 2, B, 3. Save the game because reasons. 6, cast 5, 5, North 2. Okay, this doesn't look bad. Fight H. Fight H. Hmm... Well, I can say that at least he is not the slowest now. Attack. Fight 1. Fight A. Impassable. Okay. So there will be probably like tunnels, left, right, left, right, left, right, all the way around here. Insul, Insul is being useless. I should change a move for Wahuka, I guess. They have similar AC, similar health. Uh... what did I want? Oh yes. I keep on forgetting what spells that I want to cast. Goodbye. 10-foot pole. Yeah, the enemies here are not even serious, apart from the lich. I wonder if there's any challenge, like challenging monsters before I get there. Goodbye. Hmm... Fight E. Fight E. Goodbye. Nicely done. Really? Sprites. I hate sprites, purely because of their curses. Whoa! Atop this peak, looking north, a cave beyond White Wolf. E, a large beast above Wyvern's Peak. South, distant uncharted islands. West, a pirate ship beyond current bluffs. Um, uncharted island to the south seems a place I'd want to go, and the pirate ship on the west, so... We may want to go to one of those places. They can't even cast acid thingy because they are acid monsters. Now, how do I get out of here? Yep, way too easy. The good thing is I'm not losing that hmm, that many charm gems. Okay, so basically I'm stuck here, right? South 5. Cast south 2. Oh! Cat. Can I? Oh, 6, cast 5-5, north 1. What are rats? That's a new one. Um, cast 4. But as weak as the other ones. And they don't give any loot. How did I end up here again? Cast 5-5, south 1. Weird, teleports me around. Cast 5-5, north 1. Oh, oh, that's the end of the thingy. But should, oh, I see. I see, I think. 5-5, west 5. Not entirely what I wanted, but... Can I not cast spells here? You can add rest as well, and two party members are paralyzed. Jyo toy! Can I cast spells now? That's done, good. Fight A. And of course, Wahooke has not enough spell points. Splint mail plus 2. Do I have? Hey, I do already have that. That's fine. So basically, I need to cast 5-5, west 2. Cast 5-5, west 2, and get my ass back to Portsmouth. Sell stuff. Uh, sell. I will not sell the longsword yet. I will probably sell it between episodes. Well, check out if it's good or bad. Uh, sold to rest here. Crossbow, silver shield, splint mail. A crossbow plus 2. Nice. I'm nearly dead, and you fight me here, eh? 3-1, D. 16 from... No, I can't even do that. Um, 3-5, A. Should be. 16 from that crossbow. I think that's the most that, what's his name, Ensole, ever dealt. Nice, we are only 44,000 points, well, experience points away from getting level 6 spells for Wahooke, which is great. Anyway, for now, that's all. I don't really have an idea for the next episode. I may try and go towards the pirate ship, or... Or, or, or try to explore what's before that ledge that constantly eradicates my party. I may try to take him on a few more times. But anyhow, for now, that's all. Hope you guys enjoyed it, and as always, see you in the next.